I'd like to call to order the Proctor City Council meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perform a roll call at this time. Counselor Benson?
Present.
Counselor Peterson?
Present.
Counselor DeWalt?
Present.
Mayor Ward's also in attendance. Please let the minutes reflect. Counselor Johnson is excused from tonight's meeting. Also in attendance is City Administrator Rich, City Attorney Henka, Minister Administrative Assistant Mizuko, and Sergeant Reebold. Looking for a motion to approve the pre-agenda meeting minutes for Monday, June 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
Counselor DeWalt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Benson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes for Monday, June 2nd, 2025? Before that motion is made, I have one correction. Under the, looks like, second, motion in second, it says Benson ordered to approve City Council meeting minutes of May 5th, 2025. That date should reflect May 19th. So after that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Counselor Benson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Before making that motion, I'd like to make one addition under 3A. I'd like to add the Parks and Rec meeting minutes from June 10th, 2025. And with that addition, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So?
Counselor Benson made a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose. Motion passes. Brings us to comments and suggestions from the citizens present. The public comment suggestion period of this meeting is when the City Council offers a time for everyone in attendance or watching from home to address the City Council. Once we move on from the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the council unless the mayor acknowledges you. As a general rule, the council will listen to all comments but are not required to comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. If you'd like to address City Council during the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the meeting minutes. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone addressing the City Council will be prohibited from using obscene, profane, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts the meeting or the security of the public. Is there anyone at this time that is interested in participating in the public comment suggestion period of this meeting? If so, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268. We'll give that about a minute. All right. Hearing none. We'll move on. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Before making that motion, I guess I'd like to pull 4B and 5A. And then I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Sent by Counselor Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. That will bring us to 4B. Under Clerk advises council, Parks and Rec Committee recommendations, and your packet is recommendations from the Parks and Rec Committee. We'll just take them one at a time on all these recommendations. But as you can see, number one is the North Forty Trail Boardwalk construction, wetland and stream crossing. The committee recommends that the City Council move forward with the seeking bids for the construction installation of boardwalk at four key wetland and stream crossings. Looking for a motion or discussion on this item? We'll go ahead and make a motion to use food and beverage tax to move forward with seeking bids for the construction installation planning of the boardwalks. If there's a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Benson seconds that motion. Is any other discussion?
Yes, just one.
Counselor DeWalt?
That'll allow to proceed to get bids. And in those bids, are we going to include declaring them too?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other conversation? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Brings us to number two on the memo, pickleball court construction. The committee recommends that the City Council continue with project planning and the bidding process for the proposed outdoor pickleball courts if the funds are available. Looking for a motion to approve the bidding process for the pickleball courts. As a reminder to council, prior to the meeting, in our pre-agenda meeting, there was conversations that the site wasn't a final site and SCH, I believe, was looking at other options of where to put the facility. It would be my recommendation, I guess, to table their recommendation until we get more information from SCH, but that would be up to council. Any conversation on that? Hearing none. I'll make a motion to table the pickleball court recommendation for a future meeting until SCH gets us more info.
Second.
Sent by Counselor Peterson. Further discussion? Counselor Benson?
I don't mind the table, but I'd like to just keep it on the agenda and perhaps revisit it at our next and future meetings.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. That brings us to number three, trail route and highway crossing approval. Again, the committee is recommending to the City Council approve the trail route through the city of Proctor, including the proposed crossing at Highway 2/Colony Avenue. This trail segment is a critical link in expanding connectivity for pedestrian cyclists and will enhance regional trail integration. Is there a motion to approve the trail route?
I'll move the trail route.
Counselor DeWalt made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Counselor Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Brings us to 5A under unfinished business. City of Proctor blight policy. This is a first reading of ordinance 06-25. Is there any discussion regarding the first reading? Counselor Peterson?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. So I would like to do a small change to the ordinance. So in... Okay, fine. Give me one second here. 91 dot 4, 147 notice and abatement. I would like to see if we could do a change for 10 calendar days to 10 business days. And also, for the five calendar days, be business days.
Good. Counselor Benson?
If we could just add a definition of business days, that business days shall be Monday through Friday.
I think that's simple enough, yeah. Cool.
Yeah, council, I think that works. We probably want to exclude holidays. Days that seats closed.
Yeah. Business days would reflect the city hall business hours.
Right.
You know? Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council have any other conversation? Counselor Benson?
Once adopted and we recognize some changes, tweaks, we have to go through the entire process again? First and second readings, or can we just tweak it?
I believe any time you change city code or ordinances, don't you have to for a second, or no?
That's been the general practice in Proctor. Is any code amendments do get a first and second reading to allow for public input?
And I prefer that. I was just kind of curious in case the laws, rules, regulations have changed.
And I'm thinking there may be an exception for script changes, changes that don't alter the, you know, the meat of the ordinance, but that's just off the top of my head.
I was thinking, well, things like from shell to may.
Well, sometimes that could have pretty significant change. Something like that. I'd probably want to see how the appropriate readings. But, you know, correcting scribners errors, a missing word, things like that, that don't really change the meat of the ordinance, I think can generally be done without going through the process.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We will move on to 6A. SLA amendment, Highway 2 lighting. So in February 2025, the PUC, Proctor Utilities Commission, entered into a $10,000 supplemental letter of agreement with the costs equally shared by the city of Proctor. The project is currently over budget and they are looking for an amendment to cover that cost and then any additional work that they may. It says in there that if the work isn't done, they'll refund. So... Looking for, I'm sorry, I'll continue. PUC voted to approve a budget extension and they're recommending and requesting that the remaining project costs be funded through local sales tax revenues. Use of sales tax fund requires City Council approval. So looking for a motion to approve that request. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sent by Counselor Peterson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Brings us to 6B, 842nd Street driveway repair recommendation. This stems back to our Second Street project. There was a homeowner that had recently put in a new driveway. When we performed our project, there were some issues with the road becoming higher in elevation, which created some water runoff down the driveway, down the rightway, and into his garage. We met a few times out on site. We asked him to get a contractor and come up with a plan. That plan is in the packet for your review, along with the quote of what it would cost. You can see on the map, there are four different zones that are being addressed. Zones one and four are the alleyway. Zones two, or Zone 2 is the city rightway and Zone 3 is the homeowner's driveway. Just wondering what council would like to do. I know Counselor DeWalt and I met on site with SCH and the street department a week or two ago to discuss the plan and any changes that were, they were looking at making. So we're just looking for direction from City Council on how we'd like to make the issue that this homeowner was experiencing, how to correct it. So I'll start the conversation since no one wants to, but you see the quote is 16-6. And in my opinion, it's a, it's a three-phase project, right? You got the alleyway, you got the rightway, and you got the homeowner's driveway. So if you took that 16-6 and divided it into three, right, it would be about $5,500 bucks. We did get some money from the original contractor, USA, to fix part of the issue here. At the original meeting with the homeowner, it was discussed that we would fix our rightway portion of the issue. He would still probably have a seam running across his driveway. And at that time, the homeowner was okay and aware of that. Now it appears that this plan includes his whole driveway and a lot more of the alleyway than what we originally had disturbed in the original project. So... You know, if we went with the plan presented in front of us and divided it by three, we would take two portions of that. We'd fix the alleyway, we'd fix the rightway, and that would be about $11,000. And the homeowner would be responsible for the other 55. Keep in mind, we did get $7,000 out of the contractor to make some repairs. So going above and beyond what we originally had paid for the project, we're looking at, from a city standpoint, additional $4,100 bucks. But again, what would council like to do? Would they like to pay for the whole project? Would they like to eliminate Area 4, since that wasn't anything that we had touched to begin with? Lots of options. Or would we like to have discussion on it? Counselor Benson?
I was not on site.
No.
And I didn't, I don't have the benefit of sitting there with the street department or the engineer, so I'm going to rely on...
So onsite, you can see that where his driveway meets our rightway, it does make a V, so I could see where the water was piling up. Counselor DeWalt made mention that there was a telephone pole or light pole or something taken out of the corner of his driveway nearest the alley. And there were a lot of seams there that the homeowner wasn't happy about. And that's when we discussed the seam issue. You know, you're still going to have the one seam from the rightway to your main driveway, but all the other little seams would be gone at that point. And then when you enter that alleyway, there's another big V going there. With the height of the alleyway, Senate thought it would be best to tear back the alley as far as he's showing on that diagram, make it more, make it slanted correctly so the water runs properly. And what they're proposing here is all the water running down Ninth would come down the driveway, go across the alleyway, and end up in the ditch on the other side of the alley and run down that way, where previously, water would run down his driveway and run down the ditch between the garage and the alley. But now they're making it so everything runs across the alleyway. See where I'm talking, council?
Mm-hmm.
So there were issues with it. The, the original work was... And again, because of the height of the new road, it made it difficult to tie it all in. And I don't know if the homeowner here was proposing, you know, he gave us a quote for the whole thing, but I know at the first meeting, we told him that we'd replace our rightway section in the alleyway. But, so I think we have to go true to our word on at least Section 1 and Section 2. But I guess, what would council like to see with Section 3 and Section 4?
I'll start with Section 4, because I'm looking through staff comments. And they're given an explanation, but not a comment of thumbs up, thumbs down, that it needs to be done. I'd like to know, what do they, what does our street department feel is going to be the best? To include 4 or not to include 4?
Well, in the pre-agenda meeting, they weren't recommending any of it, right? I know at the meeting we were at, Jay and Rick were saying that it made sense to do that. So I guess I don't...
I'm just looking at the memo for the notes. I don't see anything in there. Either way, that's...
I would say that staff did not make a recommendation on what you should decide. They're just presenting information for you to make your decision.
And I guess I'm just going off of what the two street guys that were there were saying, that if we went back to where Darren was and it was talking about, I thought, and maybe I'm misquoting them, but I thought they had made mention that that makes sense and it would be, it would make it better.
That's what I took, too. I was surprised under the staff comments, I didn't see that. But that's what I was believing they were indicating at that meeting, is that that would help the elevation climb to Ninth by extending the alley back and make it better. It's not such a ski jump.
And I'm not opposed to doing 1 and 4, but I know as discussed in the pre-agenda meeting, too, that if all the water is draining across the alleyway, are we going to run into issues with ice buildup? Is it going to be a safety issue during the colder months? I mean, I guess either way, if we do 1, which I feel we should be doing 1, water's going to run across the alleyway there anyway, so we're going to have the same issue.
I think that by going back into 4 and increasing that elevation is going to help keep the water flowing more directly to the right of 2 over 1, keep it more going right to that rock collection.
On the corner there?
Yeah. If we don't do 4, then I think it's, then I think it's going to trickle down the alley. That's what I could see anyway, by being out there and just looking at it.
Administrator Rich? So if my math is correct, and I'm not a mathematician, I'll tell you that much, but my math was about $5,500, a little over 55. So if we did all of 1, 2, and 4, and we split that into three, you know, three projects, right, it's probably not equal amounts, but I don't know what the numbers would be roughly. It would be about $4,100 bucks more than, that we'd have to come up with funding for.
That's correct.
Do we even know where that funding would come from, general, or?
It would just come from general fund, fund, um, it's unbudgeted, so someone's budget is going to be affected by it wherever you choose. The other questions that I have for you for discussion is, should you approve this? Do you want the homeowner to be the one that signs the contract?
So that...
And then payable on invoice from the contractor to the homeowner, whatever you decide? Do you want us to be paying the homeowner, or do you want us to be paying the contractor?
Well, and that's what I was going to ask legal, is however we do this, would it be a wise idea to get an agreement with the homeowner to keep us harmless for many future? I mean, if this was his plan, this was his contractor, this was his idea, all we're really doing is approving it and paying for a portion of it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that is a good idea. Get something in writing saying that he's releasing any future claims, you know, related to this construction project and the drainage issues he's alleging.
Is that something legal could draft up?
Absolutely.
Council have any other discussion? Does that answer your questions, or no? So...
Is that what you would want to do? You'd want him to sign the contract, not the city signing the contract, and then payable, just some guidelines of what you want that agreement to look like? Payable upon invoice from the contractor and to the contractor, not him personally?
I would prefer keeping it all in his hands and then have Senate submit us a bill for areas 1, 2, and 4, if they could do that.
And do you want to set a budget limit? What if there's overages? What if there's unexpected costs? So do you want to just tell the homeowner, this is our budget?
Can we do that if we start getting into a project that's in our rightway or in our alleyway and there's an issue? Doesn't that fall on us?
I don't see how it doesn't.
What if he chooses not to do area number 3 and it causes drainage problems?
That's why, that's why I want to make sure we have the harmless agreements in place, because if he decides not to do 3 and he has that seam, which we discussed at the first meeting, there potentially could be. This was his contractor and his contractor's plan on how to fix the solution, so... Counsel? You got, am I out of line?
I almost think you have to. I mean, we own 4, 1, and 2. I think we have to make a decision here tonight of which way we're heading, and then Administrator Rich has to reach out and say, this is what council decided, before we start hypothetically assuming what he's going to do. We need to know what he wants to do. And then if option A is he wants to do 3, and tie that all together, great, it works. Option B is he does not want to do 3, then we have to make sure that 2, 1, and 4 are taking care of the problem on our property. And at that point, I don't know, it gets kind of confusing, because it's, we own the property, we're hiring the contractor, we're paying the contractor. Why would... I mean, everyone knows that we go to our edge of our rightway. And if there's a seam, there's a seam. It's unfortunate, but it is. But he has...
Well, let me ask you this, I guess. What is the bidding amount for a city that would have to, it's a hundred and some thousand, ain't it? I mean, we can, we can put this out without putting out for bids, right? If it was our contractor, we could just handpick somebody at 16, at 17 grand?
That does not have to be bid at all.
Okay. So we could take the contract, but then I would still want that harmless agreement in place. And I don't, maybe legal can answer that. I guess I don't know what's a better, safe situation for the city. Because the contractor is performing work on our property, right, so... Sorry to put you on the spot.
If it was a normal request, and we were just doing 1, 2, and 4, we weren't even talking about 3, as a city, we would require the contractor to somewhat have some kind of a warranty on the work they're doing. It would be up to them to make sure that the water is going to run the way it needs to run and it doesn't flood out of garage.
Well, then maybe we sign the contract with Senate to perform the work under 1, 2, and 4. And if Ryan wants to piggyback off our contract, oops, sorry.
No, no, fine.
I said it, ma'am. We could allow somebody, just like if we got roadwork done and somebody wanted their driveway approach tidied up, the equipment's there, the homeowner's responsible for that portion of it.
Right.
I kind of like that idea.
They're getting the benefit of all the equipment's there, they're getting it for a little cheaper. We do do that on low-down road projects.
Yeah.
And just like lateral lines, they have an opportunity to do lateral water, so very cheaply. If they just so choose to do it, it's... If they just so choose to do it. I'm not legal, but that's the way I'm trying to dice it.
Well, in those cases, then how does that billing get split up? Do they just pay the city, or do they pay the contractor?
That would be between them and the contractor.
Okay, so I think we, I would guess we'd run it the same way.
Yep.
Yeah, councilors, that's kind of where I was going to, is, you know, the contractor coordinates both the work he's doing for the homeowner and the public work. And we inform the homeowner, here's how the city's proposing that this gets... Here's the solution the city's going to do on its own property, the same contractor, can that coordinate and do the work on our property? Does that make any sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So a global solution.
Mayor, my only question then, previous you had stated that he had his driveway repaved a couple years prior to the...
Don't quote me on that. It was fairly new, and I don't know, I don't remember exactly. He was here one meeting and he made mention of it. It was fair there.
The only question I have then is, did the road, I mean, the road project obviously raised the road. If he would have, I mean, this is all speculation. If he would have known the road project was coming and knew the road was going to get redone, would he have waited and tried to get it up? You know, I know that's all speculation, but I feel like by raising the road and him, his repaving of 3, and I'm not saying we need to repave private property, I know we're not in the business of that, but it's just a, it's a unique situation where is it, is it going to still run, right? I mean, I know that's a weird slope there. And then you add height to that, and it makes it even worse, right? That's why it wasn't done correctly in the first place.
According to Darren, if they went with this plan, he could get the water to run.
Without touching 3.
Well, that, that wasn't discussed, but in the past, Brian didn't have water in his garage from any drainage.
If I may, Mayor. In fact, in the middle of Number 3, there was another swale to deter that water, so it doesn't go underneath the garage door, kicks out around to that. We'll call it the ditch area between the garage and the alleyway. Because I pointed that out on, I said, this isn't seen, this is a swale.
Yeah, closer to his garage.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, in the middle of 3, going from the road to the garage, there was already an existing swale. So that was what they did.
To mitigate.
Three, four years ago, however long this was done, to litigate that water from going underneath the garage door. So it'd be a matter, that would be a question to the contractor to make sure that that is still... To answer your question, that would be the question I would ask Darren is, will that, if we do 1, 2, and 4, and everything stays the same in 3, does that existing swale in the middle of 3 cover the water running?
Well, I'm, I'm okay with making a motion to do 1, 2, and 4 as the city's portion to correct the problem and to hopefully help the alley by extending 2, 4.
Tell your motion, councilor.
That's my motion, and, yeah.
You heard the motion by Councilor Peterson to have Senate perform the work for Areas 1, 2, and 4? Using general fund money to begin? Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Administrator Rich, what else did you need from us on this?
I don't, we'll, from here, we'll work on an agreement. Reach out to the homeowner, tell them what you decided, and work on an agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to members' concerns. Councilor Peterson?
I know it was a state thing, but I just want to tear prayers with our state senator Hoffman and wife, and what a tragedy for the state. And hopefully we can come together politically and start, start working together and not having problems like this. But thanks to all the officers that assisted in finding the, finding the person that was involved, and they'll bring them to justice.
Thank you. Councilor DeWall?
Nothing.
Councilor Benson?
Just want to encourage councils, if they have time, to attend that League of Minnesota Cities, June 25th, 26th, 27th in Duluth. Pretty nice to be with fellow elected officials and good group of presenters. Also, I want to thank the city administrator and the staff, everyone who participated in that L.C. CMR grant. I went through the, all the evaluation sheets for the cities that got awards. It's always an interesting process. And I do feel bad that the legislature did not see Proctor as a good opportunity, especially when they awarded a million dollars to eight cities for a skateboard park, parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I got a few things. Tomorrow, Blackwood's will be hosting a fundraiser for Hoghead. 10% of sales between 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. will be donated to Hoghead Celebration. That's nice of them to help out with that. So St. Louis County Fair will begin July 1 through July 6 at the fairgrounds. And I want to wish everyone a safe and fun 4th of July, because our next meeting won't be till July 7th, so we got a little bit of a break, I guess. But that's all I have. Administrator Rich?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Attorney, pick up.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Sergeant Reber, you got anything?
This weekend, Grandma's Marathon. We always have some parking and shuttle services at the St. Luke's Event Center. So just roughly from 3:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., it'll probably be pretty congested. So if citizens don't necessarily have a reason to be in that area, probably stay away. If you do have to traverse Kirkus from Boundary to Uggstead, just pay attention to signs, cones, barricades, and officers' directions.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
With that being said, we'll entertain a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $64,353.90.
So moved.
Councilor Peterson made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Councilor DeWall. Any further discussion?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor DeWall?
This will be on the liquor store, 49037. I'm assuming that's just credit card fees, but it says credit card fee reduction on it?
Yes, so we had, we're working with a company that negotiates and reduces our credit card amounts. And we need to, for the contract, we pay them an amount for reducing those fees.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a monthly fee, it's a...
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Councilor DeWall made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you.